Welcome to Saginaw Selects 2022, a city council candidate forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Saginaw County and Saginaw Government Television. I'm Cheryl Smith, president of the Saginaw County League. Our timers are Sloane Betas, a league member and a community volunteer, and Karen Lawrence Webster, who is the same. Behind the scenes is Matt Schuttnick, program coordinator for Saginaw Government Television, who is very instrumental in setting up this forum. I would like to thank the candidates for appearing and to our viewing audience for participating. The goal of this forum is simple. We want to give voters the opportunity to get to know the candidates so that you can make an informed choice when you vote. The league is nonpartisan. We do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. This evening, each candidate will be given three minutes to make an opening statement describing his or her qualifications. After that, we'll ask a series of questions, and each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. Let's move ahead to the opening statement. Each candidate will have three minutes to respond to the following. Describe your background, life, professional experiences, and qualifications for this office and the reasons you are running for it. Michael Balls will begin.
I would like to continue to be a city council member here in the city of Saginaw. I was born and raised in the city of Saginaw in 1956. My father worked at Saginaw Steering Gear, and my mother was a housewife. We lived that way for a while until it seemed like things started happening. They end up getting divorced. I was in a terrible accident. My grandfather got killed. Three other people got killed in accidents, not only survivor in that accident. And after that, it seemed like things were going downhill a little bit. My mother ended up getting sick and passing away in 1975. Eight years after that accident, grandmother moved in and took care of me and my brothers and sisters. And I was raised here in the city of Saginaw, and ever since then, it's been like I've been like a underdog to a certain extent. But lo and behold, after going to school and dropping out, I got involved in going to night school, and I eventually got hired in Saginaw Steering Gear. And that's where I think my career took off as being involved in the community. I was on the civil rights committee. I was a trustee of the union hall. And eventually, I was a delegate to the Constitution Convention. And during that time, I learned a lot about politics. I was involved in the A for the Randolph Organization, the Get Out to Vote Organization that was nonpartisan. And I walked all the streets in the city of Saginaw to help people get elected. I've been involved in elections and picketing people there was non-union shops in Las Vegas, Washington DC, Florida, Indiana, Washington State, Detroit. And I was getting involved in those elections to see if other people can have their union representation on their jobs. So I think I was built for this position to a certain extent because I care about people. And I've been involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters Program for over 30 some years. I am a big brother. I'm on the board of directors of the Big Brothers. I'm involved in the credit union movement. We just merged with another credit union. We bring a $1.2 billion credit union to the city of Saginaw with Financial Plus and Wine and Gas Credit Union. So I've been involved in a lot of things in the community. And I had had six little brothers so far, and I think I was born for that job too because after losing my father, I know how it feels to grow up in a household without a father at home. So now I've been mentoring kids my whole life. I'm involved in the Youth Development Corporation, teaching kids pre-apprenticeship training and helping them get skilled trade jobs.
Brenda Moore.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters as well. I'm a native of Saginaw, born, bred, and raised, graduated from Saginaw High School, graduated from Delta College. My life has really been an open book. I've been doing what I've been doing for a long time and didn't know what it was until I actually got into politics. In terms of my educational background, I'm involved with a group that most of my colleagues are as well now, Michigan Municipal League. There were four levels of education, and I completed them all: education, leadership, government, and ambassador. And that was like a program that should have taken the average person, they said, three to four years. I completed it in a year and a half. It was important that I understand what actually a politician was supposed to do. I don't have any, I didn't have any background on being a politician. I worked for SEIU, which is Service International Saginaw. I worked for them, and I was what we call an organizer. So I'm well-adversed in laws and rules and governments that govern most labor unions. My life is helping people. Why do I think that I would be good in this position? Because I love my city and I really want to see our city move forward. Thank you.
Bill Oztas.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this this year for the candidates. So I was born and raised in Bay City, Michigan, and I moved to Saginaw in 2004. Shortly after moving into Saginaw, I got very involved with volunteering, and I also started serving on the city's Historic District Commission, and I served on that from 2006 to 2018. While I was on that board, I actually helped kind of reformulate the board, get their bylaws in order and some other things that we need for the state that they were requiring, and then also went on to chair that commission for six years, which then kind of led me into city council. So why am I running for office? I'm excited to continue working with developers trying to bring jobs to the city. I want to make sure that we keep increasing our population, so working on some projects that would help do that. Just recently, I worked on a program for the last year and then teamed up with our Historic District Commissioners to bring in a certified local government program that will play nicely with our redevelopment readiness city certification. So through that program, I'm hoping, and the goals are to try and redevelop some of the properties that are maybe along Genesee, maybe the Jefferson Apartment Building, who knows? Well, we just got this program certified, so I'm excited to come back to the council and work on that. Also, serving the residents and serving the citizens. I am often seen at neighborhood association meetings. The police department is doing what they call their roll call, front porch roll calls, and you can actually find me at a lot of those as well. Gives me a chance to really talk to the residents and kind of hear what they think is going on in the city and start to build those relationships. I too am working my way through the Elected Officials Academy with the Michigan Municipal League, MML. And over the course of the last three years, I am now like the four levels that we just spoke about. I'm about three and a half, three and a half, over three, three and a half, three and halfway through. So anyways, what I'm trying to say is I'm about halfway through my third level, and I'm excited to complete that as well because that really does give you some good groundwork on what it takes to be a good councilperson and understand city government. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Autumn Scherzer.
All right. First, I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters of Saginaw County for hosting this forum. Four years ago, being in this community and very active, I decided to run as a write-in candidate and successfully was elected. And it allowed me to sit at this table and bring an intentional voice. I've also worked in workforce and economic development for 15 years within Saginaw and now, most recently, in Flint. So that is something that is very passionate and something that I hold dear to my heart. So also, being a write-in winner and being elected to the table, it's allowed me to support everyone, our constituents, but also work along with my colleagues with civility. And I think that is key when you're sitting at this table, and one of the reasons why I continue to want to serve, because being intentional and civil is very important when you're making decisions that impact the entire Saginaw, city of Saginaw, but also your constituents because, just like the rest of us, we all live here. So what we decide at the table impacts us as well. Once graduating from college, I'm a graduate of Eastern Michigan University, I had a pretty transformational thing happen in my life that kind of put me in the trajectory to, I never thought I'd be in politics, but as things played out, it was kind of like a natural position and/or a race that I wanted to put myself in. And I think it's one of the best decisions that I've ever made. I'm, like I said, dedicated to workforce and economic development. I am a strong and avid supporter for public safety and firefighters, so both our police and our firefighters. I value transparency and honesty, especially sitting at this table, but in almost everything that I do. And I am committed to positioning Saginaw to maximize all of our resources that we have possible and available to us, and even now, as we have some resources that is going to be transformational for generations to come for us and our family and those that come after us. I'm a proud supporter of Hidden Harvest, the VA Hospital, arson watch, as well as Urban Racket Foundation and the Red Association of Saginaw. And I'm also a member of the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation Board, Crime Stoppers Board, the YMC Membership and Program Committee, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, and a graduate of Henry Marsh Public Policy.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the questions, and each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. Question one. What are the priority issues facing this office, and what actions would you take to address them if elected? We'll start with Brenda Moore.
One of our biggest issues that I think the city is facing right now is population growth. We talk about housing, we could talk about employment, we could talk about crime. Those are the three, I guess, if you wanted to look at what we need to work on. But population is our key factor because we're under 50,000, and we still stand a chance of losing funds as it relates to CBDG and some other funds that we get in. If I were elected, some of the stuff that I'm working on, if I am reelected, I will continue to work on trying to develop new resources, income, and the talent pipeline to come into our city. Thank you.
Bill Oztas.
Thank you. Issues that I think are really facing our city and things that I'm prioritizing on are the population growth as well. We cannot reiterate that enough, how that affects our block grant programs and the money that, the programs that that supports within the city of Saginaw. The other thing I want to mention too is that I want to continue to work with and actually just be accessible to the residents and to anybody that maybe wants to come into the city and develop or do business. I've done both recently, so whether it's a resident that calls me, what I've heard in the community is that, you know, Oztas will give you a call back. And that's very key and very priority because I know before I got on the council, sometimes you would reach out and you wouldn't hear nothing back. So I make sure that that is something that is very high priority for me, but then also people that are coming in for development. So sitting down with them and kind of hearing them out, and then if we get to a certain position of that, then them getting the right people at the table, whether it's the mayor or the managers and making sure that they have something that they can, somebody they can talk to. And there have been some programs that I've worked on already with, down in the east side of Saginaw, with the Jefferson One Building, just making myself accessible for people when they were doing the adjunction, when they were redeveloping that too. So just really focusing on trying to bring a business and getting people living in the city. The other thing I want to make sure too is that my police and firefighters have the tools that they need to keep the citizens safe, and that is a very high priority for me as well. The other thing too is just making sure that, we've done some work here on the council over my tenure, the last three and a half years, where making sure that your civil liberties and your rights are protected, and that's for everybody that lives in this city. Everybody should be treated as a person with dignity and respect, and that is one thing that I hold very dear to my heart. So thank you.
Okay. Autumn Scherzer.
I feel bad because I'm mirroring some of my colleagues, but, you know, declining population is a huge issue. And I think any issue that you bring up kind of goes hand in hand and relates to each other because you have to have the small-scale infrastructure to attract people, but you also have to have the people to make sure that our jobs are being filled and our businesses are staying. But it is concerning because as serving in the, since I serve on the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation, you know, we have funding available and resources available for our businesses, and so our CDBG money also could be, like Mayor Moore said, that we have an issue where if we're under 50,000, we can lose our funding. That's going to have a huge impact, not only just for CDBG, but for SEDC. So the other thing is blatant crime, and I think we've made some steps to address blight. I don't think it's an end-all-be-all or the final solution, but we've made some steps in the right direction to address it. And again, you know, protecting and providing the resources necessary for our police and our firefighters to do the jobs that they need. We used to have 135 firefighters in here 43 years ago, 40 years ago, let's just say 40 years. We're down to 35. So that's huge. And, I mean, that goes along with some other issues, which you're going to bring up a question about the tax cap, and that has a huge impact on our police and fire. So I think those are the top, but again, I mean, housing access and affordability also plays in that part as well.
Okay. Michael.
I think the main three priorities is that we need to worry about in the city of Saginaw is educating our youth, getting rid of the tax cap, and making sure we get affordable housing here in the city of Saginaw. The first thing I think we've got to do, if I'm reelected, I'm going to be working real hard to try my best to educate citizens in the city of Saginaw how important they are supposed to get rid of this tax cap. You know, when you have tax limitations on cities, you're not doing nothing but strangling the cities, and people are moving out to the suburbs. And we have seen that happen here in the city of Saginaw already. We have people moving out to the suburbs and sending their kids out to other school districts, only because they don't have a nice housing here in the city of Saginaw and don't have a tax base to keep our resources up to par like other cities do. You know, people want to get raises on their jobs. They can't do that if the tax cap is low. I mean, so we got to raise that up so people can have good-paying jobs here in the city of Saginaw. Another priority would be to make sure we do something with these schools here in the city of Saginaw. We got six or seven schools here on the east side of Saginaw that have just been sitting there for years. We need to turn those into senior citizen housing or either different income housing for different people with different levels of income who live in the same area. There's a lot of things we can do in the city of Saginaw, and I think one thing we've got to do is keep up our parks, keep our parks beautiful, and to maintain a beautiful place to live here in the city of Saginaw. And we got to engage our youth. We know there's a lot of youth here in the city of Saginaw who don't have proper parents or mentors, and if we don't mentor those kids, then it's our fault if the city don't do better. So we must mentor our children to make them be better and productive members here in society. I will be and have been working with skilled trades here in the city of Saginaw, and I will be doing that until my last days here on earth by helping our kids get to 21st century jobs here in Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to question two. We were just named the fourth highest crime city for a city of our size in the United States. What will you do to reduce crime in Saginaw? And Bill Oztas will start with this one.
First of all, that is not a good statistic to have. I think, looking back at, I just want to give a little bit of my mind on this, that we saw crime increase across the entire nation during the pandemic. People were home all the time. There was a lot of domestic violence, which accounts for some of these numbers. And it's no secret that Saginaw is disproportionately affected. We have a lower, higher jobless rate and such like that. So things that we can do in the city to help lower the crime rate, one is just get engaged with the community, like Mr. Balls was just talking about, getting youth programs and things out there for the kids to do. Now that the pandemic has lifted a little bit, I'm back to doing some of the things I was doing before, and I've been talking to some of the southeast side, over in the northeast side, some of the neighborhood associations, just trying to engage the youth. And in one of my backgrounds that I forgot to mention before is I've been 23 years in finance and I do IT. And trying to team up with some of those organizations and actually to come in and try and teach maybe some financial literacy, and also engaging with some other friends that I have within the STEM programs, and these are things that I'm just starting to work on, so hopefully those goals will pan out in the future. The other part about our crime rate is, number one, ride with your police officers, which I had the opportunity to do once, and I want to do it again, it's just been a little busy. But I do want to go back out and ride with our officers because it gives you firsthand what they're dealing with at night, which actually helps you as a council member to understand and manage what they're doing, but also first and foremost, making sure that they have the tools that they need and when they need them. Because that actually helps found fight the other side of it. So it's kind of twofold. We've got to make sure we educate, but then also make sure our public safety officers are able to serve the city as well.
Okay. Autumn Scherzer.
I too cringe or hate to see that type of statistics for the city because we can do more, we can do better. I am a proponent and a supporter of public safety and firefighters, so even though we have that type of statistics, I don't think just myself can solve or reduce crime. I think it's a we, and that's us at the table, but also the citizens of this community because it takes a village, not only to raise a child, but to make the changes we want to see within Saginaw. So I too think encouraging, providing resources, being involved, intentional engagement, also understanding, appreciating, and respecting diversity of the force is very important. And then altogether, just educating the community and everyone that, of what is going on, what is capable of happening, is going to be really key in reducing crime. Providing more opportunities for our youth, we have awesome community organizations here who are really stepping up and wanting to assist, not just with the youth, but with parents and with adults, with the whole community. So our neighborhood associations play an integral part in that because they're in the neighborhoods. It is the community members that are a part of those associations that can really step up and help out in reducing the crime.
Okay. Michael Balls.
I brought this subject up a couple of weeks ago at the city council meeting about how crime has increased in the city of Saginaw. And I think it's our fault that crime has raised because we don't have enough mentors in the city of Saginaw. We used to have a community center in every quadrant of the city. First Ward Community Center, we had a community center on the southwest side, the northwest side. We had community centers that mentored our kids. Today, we don't have that. I believe that when the community centers died, our children died more. So the only way we're going to be able to tackle this problem is to get more community centers open, which is our money that we just received. I hope and pray that the rest of the city council meeting join me in making sure that the community centers get some of these funds that we can start mentoring our children. If we mentor our children, then we know for a fact that their projections will go higher than they are now. We know that there are some people that keep statistics on what kids do. It's the FBI, it's the police, and it's the CIA. We need to have community centers keeping statistics on the programs that they do. If we don't have community centers, they can't keep positive statistics on children. So we got to get money into the community centers to make Saginaw a better place. I don't like it when people say Saginaw nasty. It's our fault that Saginaw nasty because there's a city council, and there's elected officials, it's our job to keep this place clean. So the only way we're going to be able to keep it clean now is invest some money into our children by putting them in community centers. Mentoring works. Association by assimilation works all the time. We have more criminals, we're going to have more bad people do things. We have more community centers, we have more people doing good things.
Thank you. Brenda Moore.
When we talk about being the fourth highest crime in the city, you know, I tend to disagree. We're a small city. It makes us look big that we are so bad. When I look at other cities the same size as ours, and they have the same type of crime going on, the question is, what are they doing different? What they're doing different is, a lot of the communities are taking back their city. The police, law enforcement, that whole team is good. Youth centers for the children, young people are good. However, we got to take control of the nuclear family again. We've got to go back to the old syndrome, and I know people hate to hear, it takes a village to raise a community, but it worked. It worked. Ms. Suzie knew you, you didn't want to disrespect, and we got to get back to the basics. What can we do to reduce it is we can all begin to work together and try to have a common goal, and the common goal should be to try to get us out of the top four. And it won't happen overnight, but we can work on trying to get things back on target. Thank you.
Okay. We're on to the third question. City residents pay taxes to the following entities: city of Saginaw, library, Stars, Dow Event Center, county services, zoo, historic museum, schools, and intermediate school district. Recently, there has been talk of removing the city property tax cap. What are your thoughts on whether city residents can really afford to lift the tax, given the taxes they are currently paying? We'll start with Autumn Scherzer.
All right. I think one of the most frustrating things about the tax cap is voter education on it and the stigma that comes along with it. You know, in '79, I think the intentions were for it to be there for about four to five years, and 43 years later, here we are with two tax caps that, one, limits the amount of mills we can bring in and then restricts them on a property taxes. But if you look at your tax bill, you will see how much money the city collects. It's about 15%. 15% of $134 million budget. It's absolutely terrible. 43 years we've been suffering with this. And like I stated with firefighters, we had 137 firefighters, six stations. We have three stations and 35 firefighters. We had a forestry division, we had a parks division, we had a recreation division, but we've lost all that. And I think the estimate is about $50 million over the 43 years that we have lost because of these tax caps. So I am in favor, and I understand the restrictions of this position, of our involvement to an extent, on getting these tax caps lifted, but I hope that there is a way for us to not only get them lifted, but to educate the community and the residents and our citizens of the importance that these tax caps, we cannot live in, today, in 2022, we cannot live on a 1979 tax cap.
Thank you. Michael Balls.
I think that we got to lift this tax cap. Ain't no other way this city's going to strive unless we lift this tax cap. The amount of money they're collecting is really hard for the people that's in charge of keeping this place solvent, for them to manage that money, so they got to charge more fees. And they have been charging fees. I believe once we, if we lift the tax cap, then we can start slowly getting rid of some of those fees, and I'm sure we will be doing that. But the thing is, in 1979, when that happened, you had a group of people here that didn't have the best interests of the city of Saginaw. Today, we got the best interests of the city of Saginaw with this city council. We want to lift this tax cap because we know it would improve our city. I'm looking forward to working and educating our residency about lifting the tax cap. We must do it.
Brenda Moore.
The tax cap has been a sore for a long time. The history and back of how it got started is irrelevant because it's here. Again, I agree with Councilwoman Scherzer when she said, this was before our time, and now we need to clean it up. Things that happened in '79 is 2022. It's time for us to move up. I would love to see the tax cap lifted. Part of the problem that we are having is, is the trust. Part of the problem that we are having is, is the trust. The, when this first came about, it was a lack of trust at city council. I think that if we can do like we did with the water increase, if we can give people a dollar figure on how much it might cost per square feet, that would make people understand. Is it going to change overnight? No, it's going to take some years to see some effect. But if we lift it, we've got a better chance of moving into another bracket as relates to our resident. Again, we need to educate our people and educate ourselves, not just the community. We need to be educated when we go out and talk about it, and we all need to be saying the same thing, not something different. We all need to be speaking the same language so that our, so that the community can understand what we are trying to do. Thank you.
Okay. Bill Oshstesh.
Thank you, and this is a topic I love to talk about. So, um, I talk about it all the time in the city because I'm, I'm, I'm trying to educate people on it. So we've talked a lot about how we got here. So it, back in the nineteen-eighties, there's what we know, what's known in the state of Michigan is called the Headley Amendment. So we have two tax caps, one was seven point five percent on your mill and then the three point eight on the general fund. Well, we got hit with Headley Amendment and it rolled us back to seven point three eight. So technically, seven dollars and thirty-eight cents per every thousand dollars of taxable value on your tax on, on your tax roll. And you talked about a lot of other things here that we're paying into. And so a lot of times I hear my property taxes went up. I said, yeah, but we just voted in a new school board, a new bond, or there was a couple of bonds for schools. So every time you pass a millage, AKA even the animal control shelter, your tax roll is going to go up. But if you check your tax line, that's seven dollars and thirty-eight cents per thousand dollars of taxable value, that has been there since the nineteen-eighties. So that's what you're paying to the city. My thoughts on the tax caps, if you lift it, we have two caps. I've been in conversations with attorneys on the millage part. Because we got hit with Headley, that's a state statute. So even if we lift the general fund of the three point eight million, which we're almost there, that other piece may stay. So technically, your taxes are not going to go up unless the taxable value of your home goes up, and I don't think that's a bad thing. Because that means that tax, the tax, homes are becoming worth more in the city of Saginaw. Another instance, uh, an example too, is a lot of, we talk about a lot of development. So if we bring a, a company in that's generating four million dollars of property taxes, guess what? We can cut, we can't even collect none of it. So let that sink in, and this is the conversation I have, and then as soon as we have that, people are like, it needs to go. They understand.
Thank you. Question four. How do you effectively communicate with city of Saginaw residents? And Michael Balls.
Well, I, uh, I use social media some. I attend, uh, community events, and I talk to people when I'm in the stores and grocery stores and stuff like that. And my wife will say, she would tell you that I can never go in the store and come right back out. And she's right, because I'm talking to everybody in the store about what's going on in the city of Saginaw and how they can be more, uh, engaged in what's going on in the city. Uh, I'm always in the, uh, grocery stores, and when I see my friends, I'm always asking them to get involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program to help mentor the kids in our community. You know, it, I tell them, it don't take a lot of time, uh, uh, when, when I'm mentoring my youth, they're, uh, whatever I'm doing at home, that's what they're doing. If I'm taking out the trash or cutting the grass, they're doing the same thing. If I'm barbecuing or we having a family event, they attend those events with me too. If I'm fixing their bicycle, they helping me fix their bicycle. So I, um, I engage the citizens by even doing the, uh, one week, one street. Every year, I'm involved in that. Uh, the credit union I belong to, and I'm a board director of, we make sure we give them, uh, a stipend every year to help, make sure those houses get fixed up. So whenever I'm in the community, I'm out talking to people about the great things about the city of Saginaw.
Okay, thank you. Brenda Moore.
What do I do to interact or communicate with the citizens? I'm out there in the community. I don't ask them to do anything I'm going to do. I visit schools, talk to young people so that they can see that, yeah, you can do it. If she did it, I, you, if I did it, you can do it. Um, I'm involved in a lot of boards and commissions. I don't have a lot of time that I sit in meetings that are not productive for me. If it's not a productive board, then I don't want to be there. Uh, I, I'm continuously working, doing things, trying to promote the city. And promoting the city is talking about the good things. For every bad thing you could tell me, I could tell you two good things. You just don't see them, but I can tell you some good things. So for me, interacting on a daily basis with the community and the people in the community, that's how I stay engaged.
Okay, thank you. Bill Oshstesh.
Uh, thanks for the question, and this is another one that I really like. Showing up at neighborhood association meetings and talking to people, uh, we've had a table down at MLive just for people to come by and talk to the city council. So we've been trying to really make ourselves accessible to, to the residents. But then like I, like I said before too, the front porch roll calls that you go to. It's just wherever you can get a chance to, to talk to the residents. Uh, one of the things I like to, um, keep near and dear to my heart is just show up. I mean, if somebody's having a book signing event, uh, like my now, now friend of mine, Eric Lashawn, I, I was there and, and met a lot of people in, in that as well. Um, like, uh, Mayor Protem Balls has talked about, you'll run into people in the grocery stores no matter where you go, uh, even can be restaurants. So there's, there's a lot of constant interaction with our residents, but mainly it just, for me, it's really trying to get into meetings, different things that are going on, whether it's something going down at the Lee Mansion or something, just being there for supporting. And that way, you can get into a lot of good conversations and you can hear a lot of good dialogue. Thank you.
Okay. Autumn Scherzer.
Um, I think for me, the most effective communication tool is just sitting and listening. Sometimes you don't have to talk. Um, and there, people want to he, be heard. So, you know, I think it's just key, they're going to tell you what they need to tell you, and it's important for you to just listen so you can understand whether or not it needs a solution, a reaction, or somebody just needs an ear, or, yeah, an ear to listen. Um, but also being engaged, like I'm intentionally involved in certain areas because they're passionate and they're close to my heart, but you just like Bill said, Councilman Oshstesh said, show up. Um, it's been a little bit more difficult with COVID, and then of course, my career path has changed a little bit, so, but you don't have to be at everything, you can support in other ways. So whether it's sharing it with somebody, sharing it here at the council table, um, promoting it somehow on your social media, there's so many, if someone tells you that they can't get ahold of you, they're lying. There's so many avenues nowadays for you to get in touch with somebody or to talk to somebody or to communicate. So I'd fully take advantage of all of it. Um, I think, like Mayor Protem Balls said, I, there's sometimes when you want to go in the store, you just want to grab a, something to hurry up and make for dinner, and it turns into a thirty-minute, forty-five-minute trip, so, but that's okay. I love talking to our constituents, and especially when they show up here at council chambers to share the good, bad, or the ugly. Um, and then even better, when we can come to a solution and not just talk about the bad or figure out what's going on and who's not doing what, but for us to be together and to figure out a solution to move the city forward is worth it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, question five. What are you doing to attract young, talented people to Saginaw and retain the same? Brenda Moore will start.
Trying to promote. Right now, we have really, young people who are going away coming in college right now don't see any hope here. I believe that if we can work on developing some outlets for them, um, Delta College, Saginaw Valley are now downtown, which is going to attract and draw, but we need more. We need a nightlife in our downtown area. So I, uh, for, for, for me right now, my biggest thing is trying to, like, my, all of my, all of the people that sit up here with me say, we need to clean our city up. We need to make our city an attractive place to where they want to come back. Most young people come back because of their parents, and once their parents die, they go wherever there is money. So we know that we've got to build up, or I should say, the goal is to increase some activities for young people as well as housing and create some jobs, some meaningful sustainable jobs for them to live on. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Oshstesh.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Um, so trying to attract talented people into the city of Saginaw. So as I said before, I was from Bay City, and even in that town, I had, couldn't find work in IT, and I ended up working in Midland. Um, so we want to try and attract some sort of development here in the city where it's going to provide some of these jobs, uh, that Mayor Moore was just talking about. And Saginaw Valley and Delta are a perfect example, uh, to try and get some training in those areas, especially for our inner-city kids where they can actually take a bus and go to school. And then actually, uh, some of them too are, I, I know are involved in the, or enrolled in the MI Reconnect program, which is free college for kids over twenty-five. We also want to make sure that we're focusing on when we start to, you know, we're starting the redevelopment of downtown, and that's been going on for years, but there really are some exciting things that are coming, and we keep saying about, saying it, but just, trust me, over the next couple of years, you're going to start to see some of it start to happen. Um, that will also, uh, should attract people because that, within some of that, you're going to, hopefully there's some programs too, because some of it might actually organically take place, or they might, maybe they'll take advantage of some of the micro grants that are available through the state, where we can get some like cool swanky places to hang out. But then we also have to focus on housing because there's going to be different price points that everybody wants to, and while they're looking at things to do. So like the Second National Bank project is a really cool project. The price point of income is twenty-seven thousand to, I'm trying to think what the high end was, fifty-eight, but it's also going to provide some grab-and-go markets and stuff in there with work-off facilities. But then we also need to re, focus on, and I know I said this four years ago, and I'm still working on this project because nothing happens overnight, you know, places like the Jefferson Apartment Building, so them, kids, kids coming out of college with that talent can afford maybe a six, seven hundred dollar a month rent because they are so, they also are carrying a student loan debt. So it's kind of multifaceted. Thank you.
Okay. Autumn Scherzer.
So I think the first thing that needs to happen, and I think it has, uh, began, is changing the narrative of Saginaw and the negative stigma. I cannot stand it when people say, oh, you from Sag nasty. It's like, hmm, wait a minute, hold on. Uh, because we have, we are very diverse, and we're creating more opportunities for us to embrace our cultures. The Mexican-American Council, the African Cultural Festival, we, the Japanese Cultural Center, we have great arts, entertainments, cultural offerings. We have great things, we just need to promote them better and to embrace them and to support them more. Our attractions, our educational opportunities, I think is another thing that can change the narrative, uh, and our infrastructure improvements that we're moving towards. I mean, we're building, uh, brand-new educational facilities for our students, which is, uh, varying opinions, but at the end of the day, it's all about the students and our children that are going to get prime educational opportunities here. And then, uh, one of the things that I think we're moving towards and is a positive thing is changing or providing opportunities, mentoring, uh, and, uh, professional opportunities for younger people. We have an aging workforce across the entire country, uh, and we need people that are going to step up and fill it. So I think as we look at our cultural, um, diverse offerings, all of the infrastructure things that we're doing to improve, uh, which includes, um, affordable housing, I think it's going to, we've got work to do, but, uh, I think it's all stuff that we're looking forward to, uh, seeing come to fruition, um, to help keep and maintain the younger population here that is so needed.
Okay. Michael Balls.
I'm personally working with the Youth Development Corporation here in the city of Saginaw, where we are, uh, teaching our kids, uh, sixteen to twenty-four years old, uh, pre-apprenticeship training for skilled trades. Once we can get our youth involved in skilled trades and they have a, a good income, well, they will want to stay here in the city of Saginaw and build them a home here. Uh, the city of Saginaw, uh, haven't had a new high school in over a hundred years. Uh, so when we have this new high school here in the city of Saginaw, I think it's going to attract a lot of young people to stay right here in the city of Saginaw and go here with a state-of-the-art high school right on the river, right downtown, is going to attract more people. Um, we, uh, matter of fact, Youth Development Corporation is getting involved in building houses here in the city of Saginaw. We got one that's coming up right now, and we know other people that have a lot of lots in the city of Saginaw, so when we build new housing, people's going to come. So, um, and then not only to keep people in the city of Saginaw, when I asked young people about, say, the staying here in the city of Saginaw, I let them know that Saginaw, uh, is a tri-city type area. So we not going to just sell Saginaw, we're going to sell Saginaw, Bay City, Midland, and all up down the I-75 corridor, the different activities that they can be involved in and live in the city at the same time. Uh, you can get anywhere around here in twenty minutes, so, um, and most municipalities are bigger than twenty minutes lo, wide anyway, so we got to sell the whole area when we get people to come here in the city of Saginaw.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going on to question six. What are the essential services provided by the city of Saginaw? And what are the three issues facing the city that will challenge its ability to provide those? And we'll start with Bill Oshstesh.
Thank you. When you look at the essential services that a municipality provides for its residents, it's really good drinking water, public, you know, you've got good drinking water, your public safety, and then on the other hand, the, the city collects taxes. So our tax cap is an issue. As we've discussed in the past, over the years, we've lost a lot of services to the city, including some of these neighborhood parks. Um, used to be pools and stuff in the neighborhoods as well, is what I was told prior to me moving into the city. Uh, but then also, um, looking, we, we've talked about that a little bit too, but then the other thing is, I talk about public safety, so even though we have our tax cap and some of our police and fire are paid out of the general fund, everybody knows that there's a seven point five percent mill that also funds another thirty positions, twenty in the police department and, um, ten in the fire, and ten in our fire department. So that's also going to be a challenge there as well because that's also based on property, property values. So if property values go down, we start to lose funds, and that's exactly what happened with that program when it started, I think it was back in two thousand and six or two thousand and eight when we first voted that in. Talking about water and our infrastructure in the city, that'll also be a challenge. Um, our water department, our beautiful building is now, I think, around a hundred and twenty-five years old, so it's getting in need of a little TLC to keep things running for the city so that we can provide, uh, some of the best drinking water for not only the city, but some of the surrounding areas that we also provide water for, like Kochfield Township and such. So, so we're looking at that, and thankfully, we've had some, uh, some luck there with some money that, uh, big news article press release over the, um, it was on Friday, where we've got some funding coming in to make sure that that is going to be, uh, taken care of so that if we were to lose fire, we will have a water tower now that's going to be built to make sure that we still do have those good drinking waters. So just looking at those basic things that you need to provide, um, good service for the city, that's going to be some of the challenges that we have there, and hopefully, um, we can either work with our legislators or to, to find some grant money to continue some of these programs, or like Mr. Balls said, uh, the tax cap, lifting that and collecting more property taxes would also help us as well.
Thank you. So I think this is a great question because sometimes, um, individuals or people can get confused on what, what city council can do and what the city does. And like Councilman Oshstesh said, it really is utilities, police and fire, and collection of, uh, taxes. All of them affected by, again, the tax cap. Um, but I think, you know, one of the things that we have done really well here in the city of Saginaw is provide high-quality, clean drinking water to our residents and to the communities around us that we provide that service for. Um, and I think it's very important because even with the lead pipe replacement project that has been going on, it's going to continue, it, there's a reason for that. We need to make sure that we continue to provide high-quality water to our residents. And as far as the police and firefighters, it is extremely important that we continue to provide the resources to them because they are the ones out there making sure that we can sleep at peace at night, and if something happens, that they are available for you. Again, like I said, or like Councilman Oshstesh stated, there's certain funds in the general fund, but additional funds that go to support, uh, property or the, um, millage, and then also the fu, additional funding that goes from the general fund to help support, uh, our police and firefighters. So it's very, very important, but those three main services is very crucial, uh, in making sure that our city state is safe and that our residents have the availability.
Michael Balls.
I think the, uh, best essential that we have is water. Uh, all the municipalities around us buy our water, Freckin move, uh, Township, all around the area, except for Bay City, they buy our water. So that's one of the best things we got. Now we finna improve that. They're going to have a, uh, going to build a water tower, um, here in the city of Saginaw, the first one, to make sure we never have a pressure water drop where that the, uh, water would get, uh, contaminated because there's not enough water to go through the pipes. So we, we're really happy about that, and that's one essential service that we got. And another thing that we got, we got the lowest tax rate in housing in the country. At one time, Saginaw, you can get more bang for your At one time, Saginaw, you can get more bang for your buck for a city, for a house in the City of Saginaw, anywhere. Shaheen Development just built some condos here in the City of Saginaw. The first time the house is sold for over $200,000 ever, I think, in the City of Saginaw, when Shaheen built those developments. So we got, one thing that we got that we can improve on is our housing market, and the bang you get for your buck when you buy a house in the City of Saginaw.
More.
Again, I have to go along with my colleagues, water, police and fire, or public safety, and taxes. One of the things that I like about Saginaw is this, when we talk about water, I think that we are so privileged that we have not had any breaks in the lines, we've had no pressure. We had one time, we had a low pressure, but it really wasn't in Saginaw, it was in Vina Vista. But they, when they said it, they said it was in Saginaw, but I think that what we have to do, that is going to be a challenge. The money that was just allocated to us for the water tower is going to help us to continue to do what we need to do, but we got to find other funds outside of the norm. So we have to now step outside when we talk about police safety and firefighters. All I ever hear is, there's no money, temporarily layoff, that's not doing us any good. It's something about visibility of police officers, they tend to keep crime down as well, and I really would love to see us get to the point where we increase our housing population, because when there's houses, there's less chances of people wanting to commit crimes in neighborhoods. So when we talk about the essential services that we have, the one that I always brag about is our water supply. Okay, I brag on our water, good water. Thank you.
Okay. Question seven. The City of Saginaw has a budget of millions. What experience do you have in fiscal management and oversight of a budget of that size? And we'll start with Autumn Scherzer.
So being on council for, for the past four years, you know, we have 134, currently $134-million budget, so that includes, you know, some pretty hefty financial and fiduciary responsibility. As us at the table, we, those, any expenditures over a dollar amount, and I think it's $2,000, is approved by council. That includes $38-million general fund, that includes a $24-million special revenue fund, that includes a $62-million enterprise fund, it just all totals $134-million, $8-million internal services fund, and a $34,000 fiduciary fund. You have to be, one, informed, and you have to know what's going on with that amount of money, but also, most recently, the $52-million ARPA funds, and along with that comes policy, processes, and do's and don'ts. And you do yourself a disservice. I'm, I live in the City of Saginaw, so if we misappropriate or don't spend funds correctly, guess what? It comes back not only me as a councilperson, but I'm a resident of the city. So I take pride in knowing that I'm educated and I'm informed on what is going on, and I'm not afraid to ask the questions if something doesn't look right. And I will ask that question. And, but outside of that, I've worked in workforce and economic development for 15 years, and worked with over $25 million in federal, state, and local funding.
Thank you. Michael Balls.
Been on the city council now for nine years. I think the best thing I could do is, by helping manage that, is we manage the manager, and let the manager manage the people that take care of the finances. But being, one thing about managing anything is big, that you can't do by yourself. That's why we have a city council, because we all get involved in that, we all make a decision for them to do what they do. They bring the budget to us, and then we approve the budget. Been involved in a credit union, been the president and board director of a credit union, worth $430 million. We do the same thing as a board. Now we just merged another credit union, now we worth 1.2 billion, so we will be doing the same thing. Let the managers do their managing, and as a board, we will collaborate on what we should do and should not do. And we all, we gotta, all we gotta have good board governors wherever you at. So being involved in this city council, when we go to the municipal league, they teach us board governors, governors, and we try our best to apply it here to the City of Saginaw.
Thank you. Brenda Moore.
When I first started, I only knew how to balance my own checkbook. Over the course of time, you learn that your checkbook is tremendously smaller than what you're running now. We have a management team that does an excellent job, I feel, and I don't have a problem. When the budget comes out, I get the thick book. I want, I want a printed copy. If I don't understand what it is from department heads, I request a meeting, and they break it all down. When we think about council, we need to also remember, council really only has one responsibility, and that is policy and procedures, and to oversee the city manager. Again, like Mayor Protem Balls indicated, yes, our job is to let day-to-day operations is not ours, but we are, to a certain degree, responsible. And, well, I should say, the city manager is responsible for us, for us to help us understand how this money is being spent. He has an open-door policy, if you really want to know something, all you got to do is email him, text him, or come in, and he will sit down and talk to you. So, how, how is my, was my experience of our budget, I think that we do an excellent, because we do have a reserve now. And if we didn't have people who knew what they were doing, we would actually would have been had an emergency manager, I feel like. So thank you.
Bill Oshash.
Yeah, thank you. Pretty much like everybody is saying, the, you roll up your sleeves and you first get into this position, and you figure out how it all works, and you start diving into and trying to understand that budget. One of the things you have to do is you have to, you have to read it, like the mayor was just talking about. You get into and start looking at all the different line items, and question something if it doesn't look right. Then when those expenditures and things are coming to the council to be spent later on during the year, you're also making sure that, you know, if you, whatever, if you're buying stuff for the roads, that it's coming out of proper budgets, if you're looking at a new vendor, that we're looking at, you know, a lowest-cost bid, and making sure we're following our ordinance procedures for purchasing. So really, again, it is just an over, we oversee the manager, and then, and to make sure that, that he's overseeing his staff. And, like Mayor said, if you have a question, and I've actually done this over the course of the last three years, if you got a question, he will sit you down with either Lori Brown from our tax department, or Yolanda Jones from Office of Management and Budget, so that you can go in and have some one-on-one conversations with them, to really understand, well, why are we doing this, or why is it allocated in such a way? But again, too, the municipal league was an opportunity for me to get involved with that, so that you can really see how a city budget is developed, because it is not like a normal business, it is not like your household income, but, but also too, you have, you can relate it back to that a little bit, because you, if you're running a household, you're making decisions that affect your family or your own financial health. So it's, it's kind of the same thing, you just take it on a bigger scale.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're up to question eight. What can the city council do to encourage business and development in the city? We will start with Michael Balls.
Well, the city can keep doing what it's doing, staying fiscal responsible and cleaning up the, the city. The city spent a lot of money on tearing down a lot of old and abandoned homes, and they're cleaning up their property. So that's going to attract businesses here in the City of Saginaw. The Washington corridor, we thank Mr. Shaheen for doing all he's been doing in the City of Saginaw, and we want to work with investors. If Mr. Shaheen want to put something else here in the City of Saginaw, I'm sure we're all going to work with him. And we encourage people to work with developers here in the City of Saginaw. So far, it's been working pretty good. The Second National Bank is going to be turning to apartments and condominiums, so we working with people like that. And we've got some other developments going down in the City of Saginaw. So I'm just going to encourage people to come here, you've got the best rates, the taxes are low, come in, come on downtown and do what you need to do while the taxes are low. So we're going to encourage them to keep doing that.
Okay. Brenda Moore.
As my colleague said, we don't have a high overhead. Some of the things are inviting people into our city to tour the city. I bring people in the city. Today, I had three sets of people who were looking at investing in the city. If we encourage from the table, and we get our citizens to encourage, I think that our downtown area, it's important. Everybody wants a nightlife downtown. If downtown has something going on, everybody wants to be there. Businesses will come if you've got a downtown nightlife, or if you've got somewhere for them to go. So I'm going to, I'm going to keep, I'm just going to continue to do what I do. Talk about Saginaw, brag about Saginaw, and tell people, you need to come and try us. Thank you.
Okay. Bill Oshash.
Yeah, thanks. It's important that Saginaw markets itself, because we really do have some unique opportunities here. Just trying to get the business in, when you look at the City of Saginaw, especially within the three different cities, Saginaw has the beautiful Temple Theater, we have the Dow Events Center, we've got the outdoor auditorium, we've got Old Town and the historic district, and all the business area there, which has also attracted some new businesses there that I've seen coming in. But again, marketing ourselves, because we are a redevelopment readiness city certified city, through the, which brings in money through the MEDC at the state level, and now we are certified local government. So those two programs right there, developers will seek that out, and so that was huge for our staff to get that done, and I was glad to work, worked on, worked on the CLG part with them, but not the other part. But also just having a good relationship with the chamber, getting support from them, so that there is communication and dialogue when things are happening, so that they can work with us. Mr. Balls talked about keeping our city clean, and we just allocated some funds for that, so there is now a position back in the city, so that we can get a hold on a lot of this illegal dumping that is making us look bad. It's like, how dare you even do that to a city? I don't understand why you can't dump that much stuff on a lot, including the entire bathroom redevelopment, remodel. But, but then also looking at our small economic developers, like Mr. Balls was talking about, the Shaheens, but then we also have to focus on, like maybe the Alex DePerrys or the Alex Mixters, that are doing small block-by-block, maybe some, you know, building by building. And then some of these programs I just talked about can be very beneficial now for them to help bring some of that business in. So I'm excited, I'm looking forward to it, very optimistic.
Okay. Autumn Scherzer.
Thank you. I, too, in agreement with my colleagues, but I think most important is providing the resources and information to residents, so they understand what the DDA does, what the SEDC does, what the CDB grants for. Because if you have a business, you have an interest in our city, we want to make sure that we provide those resources to you, because we don't want you to leave. I always, mostly towards the holiday season, I always say, eat, shop, play, local, please, because it is so important for us to not only support them, but to show that, how important and the product that they're providing to us. The SVRC marketplace is, SVRC Marketplace is an awesome opportunity for businesses that want to just get their feet wet, or they've been in business for a while and want a new location. It, we have these opportunities available. We have to continue to be innovative and creative, because that is what is going to keep the businesses here and attract our businesses, just like Councilman Oshash, Oshash said, in regards to marketing. But then in addition, we have to think about the workforce. What does our workforce look like, and are they able to work at these companies that are coming in? So looking at industry-recognized credentials, short-term trainings, trades, trades is huge, and it, a very lucrative career. We have to make sure we have those emerging market educational opportunities available with our community colleges and universities around here, so it all plays a part. We want to keep business here, we need, make sure that our residents can work with the business as much as our residents need the business, so it's, they work hand-in-hand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is question nine. Do you think that the voting locations in the City of Saginaw are sufficient? If so, why? If not, why not? And we will start with Brenda Moore.
Yes. I think the best thing they could have ever did was open a absentee ballot, and not, and take the restrictions off of it. It used to be you had to be a certain age. Now, to make sure that you vote, you can be, you, you don't have, there's no age requirements. And so when we look in terms of locations, I think the locations are good, and because Stars has been staying open, taking ride, what is it, ride to the polls, that's helped tremendously. So I, I don't, I just think that our locations and everything that we're doing right now is, is pretty stable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bill Oshash.
Thanks for the question. I think we do have enough polling locations. The last election, I actually worked the election, I was actually running food to the different locations and feeding our volunteers, who are out there making sure that we have a safe election. And the other part too, is Mayor Moore took the words right out of my mouth, and I actually made the note here before we started, the AV ballot, or the absentee ballot. It is so important to get on that list, and even when I was knocking doors and handing out my literature, I had it right on the back, and I would show them exactly how you can get on that list, because there's, there's nothing better than sitting in your kitchen, drinking coffee, or that, and actually, given the opportunity to vet your candidates out before you actually cast that vote, it gives you that time. And I encouraged the people that I talked to, I said, "I've got a Facebook page, you can Google me." I said, "You can actually research me and find out what I've done and what I'm looking to do." So I, I do think that we have sufficient locations, and then the absentee ballot opens that up too. And the city, the City of Saginaw too, has not only at City Hall can you drop off your AV ballot here, we have different, I think, I believe we have four different locations within the city that you can also drop your ballots off. And if you're not sure, it's michigan.gov/vote, and then you can find out exactly where those drop boxes are in the city. So thank you. I encourage everybody to vote.
Autumn Scherzer.
Yeah, I agree. I think we have a half-sufficient amount of voting locations, because we have one of the best city clerk's office in any city in the state of Michigan. I'm not biased or anything, but they do an absolute wonderful job, not only getting information out, but providing education to individuals. You can come here to the city clerk's office at any time, and someone will help you. But also, our locations, they're right in the community. And if someone is not, everyone says, "Take you plus two," we have community organizations that have stepped up to the plate to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to vote. And that is wonderful, and that's not just our public transportation, Stars, a lot of other organizations have stepped up. And then with the Black Lives Matters movement, as well as plug, the Divine Nine organizations here, we do everything that we can to make sure that people get engaged, and provide resources, transportation, information, you name it. We do a very good job here in the City of Saginaw, so, yeah, I believe that we, we have great voting locations, and we're, I'm definitely supportive and thankful to those locations for stepping up.
Thank you. Michael Balls.
Yes, I think we do have enough voting locations in the City of Saginaw. The last time they changed them, I was kind of teed, because I'm tired of changing them, but they finally got them where they're going to be at, and I'm not going to vote anymore for any more changes for voting locations in the City of Saginaw. I think they're sufficient right now, even though the population they're dropping, I know that's why they changed the locations. But we're going to leave it like it is, I hope forever, as long as I'm here. But with absentee ballots, it's helping out a lot better. A lot of senior citizens don't have to get up and try to go to the polls. Sometimes they make mistakes. Unfortunately, I was at a voting poll one time, and an elderly person had made a mistake on their ballot, and man, it had the whole line backed up, I'm talking about for like a couple of hours, actually, and it was getting to be real ugly. But with, with the invention of absentee ballot, is, is making everything a lot better here in the City of Saginaw, so I think the polls are pretty good right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, question 10. Blight continues to be an issue. What has been done in the past isn't working. What will you do in the future? And we start with Michael Balls.
I honestly think that blight is getting better here in the City of Saginaw. I agree with you 100%. We still have some older homes that probably need to be tearing down, and we still got some blight, but the way it was five years ago compared to today is a hell of a lot different. So I think what we need to do is just build new houses in some of those areas where we have tore down houses, and we need to encourage people to come to the City of Saginaw and apply for some of the money that we just put into a fund. I think it's $3 million we put into a fund to help people improve their houses. So we're working on that blight situation by giving out grants and loans here in the City. city of Saginaw. So with the ARPA money that we just got, it's going to help out a lot here in the city of Saginaw with blight elimination here in the city of Saginaw.
Brenda Moore.
When we talk about blight, blight is probably going to always be an issue, because the money's going to run out. Now, if we all work together and we do, we work together, we work as a team, some of the blight we can help eliminate by picking up in our own areas, neighborhood associations. We're looking at allocating some money to neighborhood groups to do things. But you got to have a plan. You just don't get it. I stay in an area that is wooded. It's not the northeast district, but it's across the by docks, across the highway. I know what it is to wake up to the little critters and all of the lions and tigers and bears that we have in our yards. And I think that if we get in and we actually start to clean up, and I think, I know, and in parts of, in parts of the city, it, we're, we're getting better. We're getting better. The fall, the winter is getting ready to hit and I really wish that we could have got in earlier and started gutting out, cleaning up. But with fall coming, we might have a better chance of cutting them trees down and cutting some grass, because now we can see what's in there, so that we not in there just running across animals. Thank you.
Okay, Bill Oshish.
Yeah, thank you. I think understanding our blight is part of it, too, over the course of the years where, thankfully, we've gotten rid of the last master plan. And so the green opportunity zone, as they called it over on the northeast side, is gone and some of those properties can now be purchased. Those neighbors can take care of them that would like to, because that was just not a good thing that happened. Blight comes in a few different forms, too, whether it's a vacant property or it's a burnt-out house. The city of Saginaw incurred a lot of blight, especially since I've been here, especially in 2006, when the Delphi bankruptcy started, I saw my neighbors start to move out of my neighborhood. And then, of course, when the 2008 mortgage crisis hit and that threw people upside down, I saw a lot of people just fleeing and never coming back. So we had, we've, in, just looking at that last 20 years, God, that, that, there's been a lot that has happened there. And past Mayor Greg Branch, always said, we need to right-size the city. I think we're there, but some of the programs that we are looking into now, it's, we have situations where maybe a home will burn and we have to tear it down, but every time we tear down a house, we lose something on the tax roll. And then when we do that, everybody else has to pay more for trash and, and everybody has to share more of that, that wealth once we lose something. So I'm excited about a program that the council just voted in. Councilman Balls was talking about the $3.8 million for home renovations, but we also voted in residential and commercial money in a revolving loan fund. So as we start to get that program off the ground, I'm excited to see how it's going to work, because that's money that can go in to fix up a residential structure. I'm hoping we can get some relationships with our land bank, because I see Detroit doing this, where we can get homes, fix them up, and then sell them for what we put in, put the money back in the fund and keep doing it over and over and over again, even our commercial structures. Thank you.
Thank you. Autumn Scherzer.
Thank you. So answering this question last is not, I don't want to be repetitive, but I have no choice. Like Councilman Oshish said, we just approved for the revolving fund and like Councilman, or Mayor Protem Balls, excuse me, said, we approved money for home renovations. I think that's going to be huge. It's something that we haven't seen here. But in addition, we approved for a department to be reestablished to address blight. And that has, is much needed, because of the limited resources that we have. We now will have an individual and a division that's specifically designated to address this. I think another thing with blight is we have some inactive neighborhood associations and they're probably in some areas, no, they are in some areas where we have blight issues. But supporting, like Mayor Moore said, supporting our neighborhood associations is going to be something coming up, but it, in general, we need individuals to, in our communities to be involved. We need them to be a part of neighborhood associations. Arson Watch is coming up, and I know for a fact that they need volunteers, and that is something huge. Every year, these org, we have organizations that are able to assist, not find a, find a solution or a resolution, but they are here trying to assist us. And we don't have individuals that step up to us, to help out. I can tell you right now, I know Brenda Moore and I will be there on, we have, like we have every year. And then last but not least, if you see something, say something. There is a, state of Michigan, fine, that can be imposed, but more importantly, it's your neighborhood. If my neighbor is doing something, how, shame on me, and I would be encouraging and supporting blight in my neighborhood if I didn't say something. So we need residents to start stepping up and cleaning up as well.
Okay, thank you. We're to our 11th and final question, and it is, what are your goals for improving racial relationships in the city of Saginaw and how would you accomplish this? And Brenda Moore, we'll start.
I would have known you'd start with me on that one. When we talk about racial relationships, there's always an undercurrent. And I didn't realize, I guess I did realize, but I wanted to put blinders on, that that was a real key factor in our city sometimes, not all of the time, sometimes. I try to look beyond color and I try to look at what's on the inside, because sometimes people have been trained or raised to be in, in, in the shape that they're in or in the condition that they are. So what would be my goal to improve racial relationships in the city is just try to learn how to love one another. Thank you.
All right, Bill Oshish.
Thank you. It was very interesting when I was knocking on a lot of doors for this campaign, especially in some of our east side locations, southeast side and such, that one thing is that it's taught. You know, when I, when I would knock a door and these little kids would come up to the door with their puppies and stuff and the, these little kids, you could just see the big smile on their face and their moms or their parents explain, yeah, this is Councilman, he's running for office again. And, you know, you get high fives and fist bumps and kids don't see that. So I think that's really important that with our youth, we work with our youth so that we don't have that stigma and hate and it shouldn't, you know, so we don't teach that. And I take it very near and dear to my heart as well, when it comes to racial relations and working with things in the city. So just getting into a neighborhood, because I remember the first time I walked to a Hilton Jones Neighborhood Association meeting and everybody just kind of turned and looked at me sitting there, because for number one, we can all see my, my skin is of light color. But once they got to know me and understand that I was really there to help them, I think that helps to, to break that down. So people just network with everybody in the city and just try to be friends, try to coexist. One of the reasons when I moved into Saginaw that I love so much is I saw so much diversity and I really enjoyed and embraced being the minority in my neighborhood. I moved right into the east side on Sheridan Avenue when I first moved into, into the city and I, and I've loved it, especially just getting out into Saginaw, whether it's Old Town or that, too. I think that Autumn had talked about that earlier, we have a lot of diversity in our city. So I think we just keep embracing that. And I did want to say something here, I'm losing my, oh, again, too, just attending these front porch roll, roll calls and just, and just standing up for everybody and making sure that they're treated as a person and just trying to encourage that from a leadership role.
Okay, thank you. Autumn Scherzer.
Yeah, thank you. So one of the things that I, I love about our council is we are very diverse among many ways or reasons. And really Saginaw, isn't Saginaw without our rich cultures and our racial makeup? I think, just like Mayor Moore said, love, I mean, love wins. It does. And being intentional and supportive and encouraging and embracing cultural differences and different races is key, because you never know where someone comes from or what they've gone through. And when you sit at this table and you understand how different people, organizations are, your constituents are, one of the key things is that we're all here for the same reasons, and that is love and the passion for your city and moving things forward. I think one of the things we have done and still need to work on is diversity in our hiring within the city, but I don't think that is a secret nor a surprise. But again, improving racial relations, when you meet people where they are and you support them despite anything else, that's a win. And that is something that I pride myself in and I know my colleagues do as well. I think Mayor Moore's word of love, just love, and that's kind of clear.
Okay. Michael Balls.
My goals are the same goals I had before I even got elected to the city council. And that's to engage people whenever possible with different races and nationalities and lifestyles, to engage them and talk to them. And that's my conversation. When I see racism raises ugly head, I don't care if it comes from a black person or a white person, if they're in my percentage, I'm going to talk to them about that. And sometimes people just do what they see other people do. And normally, when you talk to people, you come, you, you can make those situations go away a little bit and give people something to think about, let them know how you would feel if you would talk about somebody or mistreat somebody because of their racial background. And normally, it works. So I'm going to keep doing what I've been doing.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our questions for the candidates. We want to thank them for their attendance here and we applaud your willingness to serve your community. Now it's over to you, the voters. Over the past few years, as our candidates have alluded to, civic groups have worked very hard to make voting easier and more convenient for everyone through no, absent, no-excuse absentee balloting and early voting. The deadline via mail or online is Monday, October 24th. And if you want to vote in person, you can actually vote up through November 8th, Election Day. In fact, the city of Saginaw's clerk will be open from 8:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, November 5th, if you have work obligations or are not able to make another appearance. I also want to promote Vote 4011, which is sponsored by the League of Women Voters, as our primary source for nonpartisan voter information on candidates or issues. Please visit vote4011.org. And remember to vote, your vote is very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.